Okay. Good evening, council. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM and I'll hand it over to Deputy Mayor Stefanik.
Thank you, Mayor. The Council Corporation Township of Horn Pain would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is a treaty number nine nineteen oh five nineteen oh six territory. The traditional land of indigenous peoples. As we work toward reconciliation, may all live with respect this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples.
Thank you. Okay, carrying on is review and note to any changes of the agenda, the approval of the agenda. There are no changes. Sorry, there was, there was. Oh, yes, there was. There was an addition, sorry. Thank you, John. We do have the one addition that I have actually put in a notice of motion for business licensing in the township and you'll see that as addition fourteen point one. The other thing I would like to note is going to come up under item number five for conflict of interest. I will be declaring a couple of conflicts and we'll just shuffle some items around in the closed, so it proceeds better throughout the meeting for everyone. And so with that one addition of three point one, or sorry, fourteen point one. If we can get a mover and a seconder for the for the amendment, please move by Counselor Ted Chenman, second by Counselor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as amended, those in favor? And that is carried. And like mentioned, I am declaring two conflict of interests. One is for fifteen point, just get the right number. And I've already submitted the paperwork for that, so fifteen point two under the closed for staffing and fifteen point three, legal advice on CTA mediation enclosed. And like I had mentioned, council, once we're in closed session, we'll move fifteen point four to the first item discussed and then I can not depart closed session after that. Okay, any other conflicts to declare at this time? I'm not seeing any, so you can do that at any time throughout the meeting, council, if such a situation arises. So moving on, we have six, adoption of the minutes from March twelfth, twenty twenty five. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please move by Counselor Ted Chenman, second by Counselor Bullinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular media of council held on Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty five as distributed. Any comment or note to those minutes? There being none, I put them to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried. The next set of minutes is from our regular meeting on March twenty sixth. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please move by Counselor Peter Kissamaker, second by Counselor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular media of council held on Wednesday, March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five as distributed. Any comment or note to those minutes? There being none, I put those to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried. So we do have some guests joining us tonight virtually in Horn Pain with a couple of presentations. So the first one is Community Living Algoma. And they're joining virtually, are they online already? There we go. Hello? How are you?
I'm doing good, you?
Not too bad, and you can hear us all right, Kristen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, I'm gonna give you the floor, how's that?
Well, thank you so much. Good evening to the mayor and town council and community members. I am proud to be here to recognize the Community Living Algoma Awareness Month. My name is Kristen and I am here on behalf of Community Living Algoma. I am also a proud member of our council of self advocate for the community of living Algoma. Our council is made out of people who advocate for advocates, excuse me, for inclusive accessibility and meaningful change. Not just within the community living Algoma, but across the entire Algoma district. We use our voices to create a more inclusive community where everyone belongs. Community Living Algoma has been dedicated to this mission for seventy years, supporting over seven hundred and thirty children and adults with disabilities. Our war is about rights, choices and opportunities, ensuring that every person is valued, respected and included as a full member of their community. But inclusion doesn't happen on its own, it takes all of us. And every person, business and organization has a role to play in making our communities welcome and accessible for everyone. Whether it's through small acts of kindness, inclusive hiring, or recognizing the value of deserve diversity. We all promote that. We building community where everyone is, where everyone can thrive in the world that is constantly changing. Thank you for always standing with us in recognizing Community Living Awareness Month and for your ongoing support in building more inclusive Algoma.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here tonight. Community Living Algoma has made Horn Pain a better place to live. And over the years, I have been able to personally take courses that have been offered through Community Living Algoma, which have helped me understand how to help Horn Pain be more inclusive and diverse and especially with infrastructure projects. So thank you for being here tonight and we will do the proclamation. So if I can get a mover and a seconder, please move by Counselor Drago Stefanik, second by Counselor Peter Kissamaker. Whereas Community Living Algoma has provided supports and services to people with intellectual disabilities and their families in the township of Horn Pain and surrounding districts since nineteen fifty four and provides services to four hundred and thirty-two adults and a hundred and fifty-four children across the District of Algoma. And whereas Community Living Algoma's goal is to, is that people with intellectual disabilities have every opportunity to participate fully in our community with dignity, independence and acceptance. And whereas Community Living Algoma works with Horn Pain volunteers and other stakeholder groups and organizations to promote citizenship for people with intellectual disabilities so that they have the rights and responsibilities and the opportunities that come with belonging, participating and contributing as a valued member in society. Whereas Community Living Algoma Awareness Month is a province-wide initiative created to celebrate the values of community living, which are inclusion, equality and respect. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the town, sorry, the council of the corporation of the township of Horn Pain does hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty five as Community Living Awareness Month in the township of Horn Pain. Council, those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
There's some things that I really like doing as mayor, and that's one of them. Okay, um, we do have another, we have more guests tonight. So we have Pinchon Limited. Is it Tim McBride and Cody Eaton? There we go. Go ahead. I realized I didn't ask in advance who will be sharing their screen. Which one of you would care your screen?
I have the presentation already on my desktop.
Okay, great. Well, welcome to Horn Pain tonight virtually, both Cody and Tim.
Yes, thank you for having us.
Yeah, I know, I'm glad you're here and would you like to speak?
Yes, I just wanted to queue this presentation up, Madam Mayor. At our last council meeting, we council accepted the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four tri-annual monitoring report, but there was questions posed with what exactly the report was, why we needed it, what the cost and what were the recommendations for? So I took it back alongside our infrastructure director, Dwayne Gudrow, and we met with Cody and Tim and the folks at Pinchon and we decided it was best to have them bring a presentation to council, so we fully understood what our responsibilities were under this plan and that's what we're doing here this evening.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it. And thank you for making the time, Tim and Cody to come and setting this up in the background, for sure.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor and council and members of staff. I really appreciate the opportunity to present today. Pinchon's been a partner with, you know, the, with Horn Pain for quite some time on a number of your environmental challenges and you know, we're more than willing to help you guys at any time. If you ever have questions about our products or deliverables, I'm more than willing to come to council at any time and, you know, help walk through the issues and recommendations and, you know, need for action, whatever the case may be, so. I've been, I've been involved with the Horn Pain products for quite some time. Probably dating back to at least two thousand and seventeen, I would say. Probably even before that with my, with my previous company. I'm the Director of Landfill Services and Municipal Services for Pinchon. But I'm probably gonna take a backseat here and let Cody talk for the majority of the presentation and I'll just jump in if there's any questions. And again, if you have questions, you don't have to wait till the end. If you want to just interrupt us and if something on your mind, we'll get at it right away.
Okay, thank you for that, council. If you have a question, just stick up your hand and I'll interrupt and we can get the question answered right then and there, okay? Thank you for that, Tim.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim. So as Tim introduced himself, he is the Director of Landfills and he's got tons of experience in the industry, so someone who's very valuable to us. I am managing the project at, for the Horn Pain landfill and some landfills in the, in the area as well. So I have worked on this project for a number of years now, since joining Pinchon in twenty twenty-one. So one of the, so some of the things that we're talking about today is just the Horn Pain Waste Disposal Site, the monitoring program, the trigger level results, the recommendations, the water quality monitoring for both the waste disposal site and the transfer station. And we'll also talk about some recommendations that we've put into the report, but we'll, we'll talk about it verbally here tonight. So we've had the contract for Horn Pain, like Tim mentioned, for a while. We've been working up in Horn Pain and Hurst and some northern other landfill sites for a long time. I've been with Pinchon in that short period of time, but have learned, learned the community and the areas pretty well. So the Horn Pain Waste Disposal Site has eight groundwater wells, two surface water locations. Some of them are shown on the figure. Surface water locations are shown along Becker Road, along the surface water feature to the bottom left of the figure and then near the landfill site as well. And this figure shows the groundwater contours and how they basically how the groundwater flows through the site and past the site. So if you look at, let's say, MW two is directly down gradient of, of the landfill, so that should capture a large quantity of the contaminants that would result from the landfilling activities. And those are some of the things that we look at when we draft these reports and complete the drilling programs and where we install these wells. MW seven was historically the background well, so understanding what concentration or what the groundwater quality was like before it, the groundwater passes through the landfill. Although MW seven was destroyed in about twenty fifteen, so MW eight was the successful replacement to that. So we'll talk about that well in a bit more detail later on. So during the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four period of time, we didn't notify or we didn't identify any significant landfill-related impacts at the site, although we noted arsenic at MW one and MW two that exceeded the guideline B seven criteria during twenty twenty-two, but not during twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. We did recommend that they should, that you should continue to be, to monitor these during future sampling events. But near fill concentrations at MW three do show some non-health-related impacts when you look at that groundwater quality. And those are present throughout the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. And then another recommendation that was brought up was that the trigger level program should be continued. And Tim can speak to the trigger level program in a little bit later. So one of the other recommendations is the installation of an additional groundwater well that is directly down gradient of the landfill. As I explained with MW two, that captures a lot of the contaminant that is collected from the groundwater flow through the site. So typically, if you had another well that may be, be closer to the surface water receptor, that would capture the further down gradient contaminant levels. But the location of the new groundwater well should just be considered to be down gradient of the landfill to better characterize the groundwater concentrations. Consideration should also be given to routine topo surveys and waste capacity assessments as they are valuable to understanding your current capacity at the site, but also understanding the longevity of your site and, and really knowing at what point are you going to be, you know, looking for other opportunities to increase the the capacity of the site or where you're gonna be putting that, that waste in, in future years. So we also recommended decommissioning MW seven. As I noted earlier, it was damaged and I do believe it's unreparable and that's been the case since twenty fifteen. Although MW eight was already installed, MW seven should be decommissioned officially in regard to Ontario Regulation nine oh three, which is what the drillers uphold their standards to. So yeah, we'll move into the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four Waste Transfer Site. Are there any questions at this moment with the active landfill?
Any questions from? I do have one question, Cody, is, so we have done like the application for expansion and everything of our landfill? And when you're talking about the wells, so we're, currently we're just talking about the existing landfill as it sits right now. Okay, I'm just concerned that if we are going to put in other wells, that are we taking into account where that expansion is going to be?
Yeah, I believe we can, yeah, Tim, if you wanna speak to that, it'd be.
Yeah, Cody, can you flip back to the groundwater contour map, please? So one of the one of the good things and bad things about the current configuration is lots of times when we have these landfill sites, we wanna put in wells and we wanna figure out which way the groundwater is flowing, but without the wells, we don't really know which way the groundwater is flowing. So the initial, you know, drilling efforts, people put the wells in the ground. And then sometimes they're not in the ideal locations. So this black box that's on here on this drawing, my understanding is that is both the existing landfill, but it also includes the expansion area, the proposed expansion area. The wells that Cody has on this drawing, I know they're difficult to see at this scale, but there's a couple of little, all the, all of the wells are outside of that black box. And our recommendation for additional wells here is the two wells that are closest to the northeast, or sorry, the northwest corner of the black line and just adjacent to the west of the, of the west boundary of the landfill. Those are the ones that we're seeing some impacts in, which is not surprising because as the water moves through the landfill, like Cody says, it's intercepted by those two monitoring locations. And there's some impacts. So the red line is actually your property line. And you, so technically you have all that space available for natural attenuation processes. And that should actually be your compliance point. So what we would recommend is pretty much where the red line and the hydro corridor or pipeline, whichever it is, intersect. Somewhere in that vicinity would probably be a more ideal trigger level, you know, compliance monitoring point. For one, it takes advantage of all the land space that you own and, and that is currently licensed on your landfill license. And then secondly, as you can see from the groundwater contours and the flow area that Cody's drawn, drawn here, there is almost a gap in the existing monitoring well network where impacts from the landfill could slip between those two wells and, and migrate towards the river. So I think it's just a, a better way for us to characterize the site, but at the same time, take full advantage of all the land that you own, et cetera. And, and we just figured that now that well seven is, is damaged beyond repair and Cody's indicated, like we have a scientifically defensible database at well number eight that can replace number seven, there's no issue there. Number seven really should be decommissioned, so it doesn't provide a conduit to, for contaminants to the aquifer. And if you're gonna have a licensed well contractor come up and do that decommissioning, they can also install that other well at the same time. So we wanna take full advantage of that, but Madam Mayor, like you said, if you're going through an expansion process and that application is in, I would probably, I wouldn't say I'd retract my recommendation, but I would, I would be inclined to hold back on that because there is a possibility with your new license that the ministry will ask for wells anyways. So, so in that case, we might wanna hold off on this plan, see what they require for new wells for your expansion and maybe we kill two birds with one stone at that time.
Okay, great, great. That's, I think that's a great idea, just to ensure that it all complies. And if this is the expansion, then it, it would appear that it would work, but I just wanna clarify, so if we're going to decommission MW seven and we're looking, I'm looking at the same map on my computer, so where that red line intersects with the yellow-orange line in that area between MW two and MW three, basically, close to the red line, that's where you're suggesting.
Yeah, that's where we'd go. And I'm hoping if we do that, we don't have to, you know, we won't have to build any trails or anything like that. The drill rig that would come that we would use for something like this would be track mounted. So it's, we wouldn't have to build roads, we wouldn't have to, you know, cut down trees. Just trying to make it as easy and cost-effective as possible for the, for the township.
Okay, thank you, Tim. And we have another question, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, just listening to you. When you say decommission, can you briefly explain what you mean by decommissioning a well and approximate the cost attached to that task?
Yeah, certainly. So it's funny, I just had another client this morning that was having issues with a neighbor tampering with their well, so I had to look it up. And, and not to scare anybody, but if you have a well that's damaged and you don't take care of it, the, the fine is potentially up to fifty thousand dollars. So the ministry of the environment takes very, very seriously the protection of groundwater resources. So decommissioning of the well, in this case, would, they would fill it with a swelling clay, essentially, and they would overdrill the top meter of it, but that has to be done by a licensed well contractor. Like, we can't just do it ourselves or the township, you know, go out with an excavator. Like, we, we have to make sure that that's done by a licensed contractor. So to do that actual decommissioning, like I said, they just have to fill it with pelletized bentonite and they overdrill the top meter. Realistically, it's probably two hours worth of work for them. It, it costs us more to get them there than it does to actually do the job. So that's why I wanna couple it with, you know, if we're gonna put in extra wells, we do it at the same time.
Thank you.
On, on another note, we do have a licensed well contractor who's coming to Wawa. Even that decommissioning exercise, if that's something we wanna address right away and get rid of that risk, we might be able to get the drillers to, that I have going to on a separate site in Wawa, I could probably get them to do a day trip and go up and do it. And if that's the case, you know, if we did a separate trip all by itself, it's probably twenty-five hundred dollars. If they did it as part of something else, it, it's really not a big expense. It's probably like fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, then definitely the staff can look into that. We, we need it decommissioned, we're seeing that in here, we're not gonna be using it anymore and I think to secure, to secure our stance from anyone. I'm just looking at council. For that, okay, I'm seeing some, go ahead, Jen.
Sorry, when would, when is the Wawa thing happening?
I assume you're talking about the, my project, Tim?
Yes.
So it's about mid-May, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Just because I imagine that we'll need a council resolution to decommission the well. So I wanted to ensure that I had time to prepare that for next meeting and not right on the spot.
The program that I have will last approximately a week and maybe longer, so there's about a, a, you know, Monday to Friday that we can wait to figure out when that logistically could work.
Excellent, thank you. Any other further questions at this time, council? Okay, you're welcome, go ahead.
I just wanted to just quickly summarize what I understand to be next steps. So I understand that council is directing staff to work with Pinchon to investigate decommissioning the well. We'll work to to mobile, to decrease mobilization costs and work with the Wawa project. And we'll bring that back to council at next council meeting. So we can have a resolution to to officially move forward to decommission the well?
Yes, for sure. Okay, that's right, okay. Okay, let's carry on.
All right, so with the Waste Transfer Site, we'll look at kind of the same thing. The groundwater wells, there's nine groundwater monitoring wells here shown on this figure. Apologize, it's not the, not the biggest figure, but, and the PDF that I provided you, my apologies, did not have the surface water locations located on it, so I did show them here on the, on the presentation. They're located along Becker Road, both along the creeks. So on the north, on the north side of Becker Road, there's surface water one and two, kind of a direct down gradient surface water location and then SW two is at the bend. OW seven was also a well that was lost at some point during the program, I think closer to twenty fifteen. And that one has not been located since then. So that one has not been a part of the program and it's been kind of a white space in our data set since that time. Surface water three and surface water four are located south of the train track. Um, surface water three and surface water four are located south of the train tracks at the outfall to the Jackfish River. And the surface water four is located all along, in the Jackfish River, but down gradient of that outfall. Um, so we identified limited landfill-related impacts um, at a general overview of the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four uh, data sets. Um, there's various concentrations um, that are likely attributed to, you know, leachate from the waste deposits at the site, um, as well as arsenic and barium, um, that exceeded the B seven criteria at the down gradient wells. Um, and they should be continued to be evaluated in future monitoring events. Um, as well as the compliance well, uh, OW one N dash ninety-three, which, if I actually go back here, uh, is just at the bottom, is directly south of the waste transfer site. Um, during the next sampling event, we do recommend that a duplicate sample be collected uh, to confirm or refute the wellsite performance. Um, so, in all, uh, if, any, if we have any questions about this uh, waste transfer site, please, um, uh, we can get to those now, I guess.
Do you have any questions from council? I do have a question about the uh, transfer site. So if we're um, in the future to decommission the site, do we have to continue with nine groundwater monitoring wells, or do they increase?
Yeah, so, so one of the things I wanted to mention, and thanks for bringing that up, is, is um, we do not believe that the water quality issues that we're seeing are associated with the transfer site themsel- itself. We believe it's the former waste deposits, which is just to the north, and that, those are the black lines, the black circles that Cody has here. Um, so, yeah, the, if you were to decommission the transfer site, you'd still have to continue to monitor because what we're seeing is associated with the former waste deposits as opposed to the transfer site activities.
Okay, uh, but would there be an increase to any, would we have to increase any wells?
I, I do not, yeah, I don't believe so. No, I don't believe so.
Okay, and it, due to the transfer site isn't actually, has waste, it's basically decommissioning an infrastructure site, I guess. Is it less? Is there, I guess, less legalities to it than a landfill site? When decommissioning it?
Yeah, yeah, essentially you just have to take all the, like you said, take all the infrastructure away from it and um, assuming the rest of the site had already been properly closed. Yeah, you're probably, probably be done at that point in time, to be honest.
Okay, yeah, it, my understanding it was, we can definitely ensure that, cuz it is all the, the um, waste site from previous years when it was decommissioned is all fenced in now, like that's all fenced in and
Okay.
It's, yeah, we only use that small portion, and then we're transferring all of that waste to the new site.
Okay.
Or the others.
Cody, can you, can you flip uh, one slide to the, to the next one, sorry? Sometimes Cody and I get ahead of ourselves because we're, you know, we're very passionate about landfills, me more so than him, so we throw terms out here that, that I take for granted, and it's just when, when I have the opportunity for Cody to present and for me to, for me to watch, that I catch them. So, um, one thing I do wanna talk about is the, in both sites, we talk about guideline B seven criteria, so you'll see that in the second bullet. Um, and you know, everyone sees, oh my goodness, arsenic and barium, you know, guideline B seven, like that sounds scary. Um, just so everybody knows, guideline B seven is essentially a trigger criteria in itself. And what you do is, like Cody said, uh, on the other site, monitoring well eight is our background characterizing well. Right? So before water ever comes in contact with the landfill, what does it look like? Right? So once you've established that background water quality, you factor that in, plus drinking water objectives. Uh, and from that, you develop a site-specific B seven criteria. Which is per, per parameters like arsenic and barium, um, is set at about twenty-five percent of the drinking water limit. So, for example, barium is safe to drink at one. This landfill is being held to a standard of point two five. So, I'm not saying it's okay, I'm not saying it's a, you know, like it's, you can do whatever you want, contaminate whatever you want, but the guideline B seven criteria is, is very, very, very stringent, and it's, it's meant to give you guys time to react. If you had an active landfill site and you failed for guideline B seven, how do you fix that before you fail at your red line, for example, right? So, this site in particular, what usually you would do with a, a landfill site is if it's not performing properly, well, you stop receiving waste is step number one. Step number two is, you know, figure out what the problem is and fix it, and if you can't, cap it and close it. So, you've already done that at this waste transfer site, right? Like, the, the old landfill has been capped and closed. So now what we're doing is we're monitoring the effectiveness of that capping and closing. And yeah, we, we do still compare it to guideline B seven, cuz that's what's required under the regulations, but um, it is a very, very conservative means of characterization of the site. So, I just wanted to put that out there, cuz I know, like I said, Cody and I throw this stuff around and, and we know what it means all the time. But sometimes it's not crystal clear, and unless you wanted to read like every single page of our report, which I know not everyone has time to do. Um, I, I just wanted to clarify what the guideline B seven is, so it's not like the end of the work.
Thank you for that, Tim, and we have a question from Kelsa Kissamaker, Belinda, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when, when do you actually are in a position to stop looking at all those wells at the transfer site? When, when is, yeah, when does it stop?
So, technically, you have to do a minimum of twenty-five years post-closure. Um, and that's a minimum. So, uh, there's, sometimes there's some wiggle room, like if you, if you had a site that you kinda mothballed, and you were just sitting on, but you didn't receive waste for twenty years, and then you're like, you know what, we never wanna go back there, let's cap it. Sometimes, the ministry will let you go back to the last day of that waste was received, and that's when your twenty-five year clock would start. Um, but for the most part, your twenty-five year clock starts when you put your cap on it. So, I don't remember when this site was capped, um, but you would have a minimum of twenty-five years. If the site, if we still have B seven exceedances after that twenty-five years, um, they will ask you to continue. One thing we could do, uh, I haven't looked at it in that much detail. I mean, usually our team, like Cody and, and the rest of the team, would evaluate the um, efficiency of the monitoring well network. Um, you know, we already, we sample it every year, uh, we report every third year. If there's an opportunity for us to sample less wells and stuff like that, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take the transfer site out of use, uh, and you're gonna submit an application to, you know, cease and desist that activity, um, at that point in time, we could probably also request to reduce the sampling requirements. If we're looking at, uh, and we, Cody and I would usually always recommend that anyways, you know. Um, it might not be that we could walk away from the nine wells. Um, but, let's just say, for example, you guys were testing for lead. And we've never seen lead at this site. Maybe we could make a, a request that, at the same time, like, hey, Ministry of Environment, we don't wanna run this transfer site anymore, but we also don't wanna sample for lead, cuz we've never seen it, and that just saves us some money.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, so there might be opportunities to reduce the program.
Okay, yeah, and our new, um, our new plan moving forward is to move the transfer site to a new expansion, so. Kelsa Spannick, go ahead.
Yeah, then here's the final question to two gentlemen, cuz you have experience. From your experience, that when you close out on transfer site, what are the costs involved? Just a ballpark figure, like I'd like to have some numbers that when you, you look at that issue. Is there major cost, minimum cost?
To, to remove the transfer site?
To, to shut it down, to close it.
Yeah, I, I, it's usually not that significant. It depends what you have for infrastructure there. If it's just uh, roll-off bins and stuff that can be picked up and carried away easily, usually the cost is very, very small.
Yeah, because we have a concrete bin that's a what, thirty feet by twenty feet, would that have to be removed? I mean, those are some of the costs that be involved.
Yeah, you, you, you'd wanna remove everything that you could from it, so that, um, it's clear to the public and everybody that this is not an operating site. They, they take, take everything you can off of it.
Thank you.
So just a follow-up question, so there are different types of sites that could be created for a transfer site? So it does, like, we don't have to necessarily recreate this type of transfers, transfer site at the new location?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're doing a couple of different designs right now. Um, we have one where, uh, the pad where the bins sit is recessed, and the, the traffic comes, you know, uh, the traffic's at an upper tier, so people aren't having to throw things up into the bin, they, they pretty much throw it down into the bin. Um, so, that involves like a, a retaining wall system and, and that sort of thing, so it's a little bit more expensive that way. Um, but yeah, we, we have other sites that are just simply, you know, a series of, of bins for waste diversion, you know, recycling, uh, as well as, you know, the actual waste, if, if they handle that stuff there. Um, and yeah, they're just on ground surface, you know, it's, it can be very, very simple.
Okay, yeah, our current facility does have it so that you're throwing down, it does have the retaining wall and all of that, like it's a concrete bin that's been um, built into the, basically the sidewall of, so you're looking down into it. But my question though, why I got on this um, wavelength is, with different transfer sites, is there ways to minimize the amount of blow that happens to the garbage? Because we end up um, and it's a thorn in Pulitzer's side of how much garbage ends up along Beck- Becker Road. And we have to clean it, like, is there, are there advances in making these bins so that the wind doesn't catch all the, like, especially the plastic?
Mesh. Uh, yeah, there, there's, there's different ways you can do it, like there's different bin systems that exist, and then, um, for most, for most of them, the way that we've been dealing with that is like a, a closable bin, right? So it's not an open bin. Um, it, it's something that's open and closed during operating hours. Um, and then, uh, the other thing too is you could have, you could get, um, what do they call it, wind debris, like, uh, mesh type things. Almost like a, look like a baseball backstop on wheels, and you just wheel them into a position.
My internet is cutting in and out, in and out.
Oh, I think, Richard, we can hear you, you might wanna mute yourself. Sorry, that's our interim treasurer, I think, yes. Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other questions, or we'll carry on? Okay, where's yours, Cody?
Uh, that was, that was it. Um, so yeah, if there's, if there's any questions whatsoever, or, or Tim, if you have anything else to, uh, to comment on. Um, I, I guess one thing we did wanna bring up, um, we submitted a proposal um, previously, and uh, just wanna, you know, make that aware again. And I know that there's been some changeover, uh, similar on, on our side in previous years, but um, uh, the, the continues to the moder- the continuation of the monitoring program, um, is obviously a requirement, something we've uh, discussed, but uh, maybe we could take that discussion offline as well. For the continuation of the program since the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, uh, monitoring uh, completed with the submission of these reports. Um, so, we currently do not have a contract to do the monitoring in the spring. Um, that's something that we should uh, definitely consider going forward.
Okay, definitely, I think, uh, we can take that, the staff can take that offline. And then we can look at, uh, the expansion of our landfill coming to ensure that our wells that are posed in this meet our needs into the future. And, um, and then staff can come back with what they need from us. I, I would just caution, I'm not sure, uh, I can't remember off the top of my head if we had to RFP out or put a call out for this type of service. But the staff will be able to talk to you about that, Cody and Tim, and make sure that we're following our guidelines properly here.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I, I found this very informative. I wanna thank, uh, both of you for coming tonight, for the staff in the background to getting this together for us.
Yeah.
Um, it's given me a lot of clarity on what happens. I've seen these reports year after year, and I'm not quite sure, and this has definitely helped. So I'm gonna leave it right now, is there any further questions before I goodbye to our guests? Okay, well, thank you so much, and uh, enjoy the rest of your evening, and the staff will be in contact.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we, we already acknowledged receipts of the report, so we have nothing there. Do you need any further information from council for that?
No, no, thank you, I understand, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on now to, um, departmental reports. And if I can get a mover and a seconder to open up the floor, moved by Counselor Drago Spannick, second by Counselor Peter Kissamaker. We have resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental reports provided at the regular media council, although Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And our first report is the deputy clerk. Jen, do you have anything you'd like to add to your report?
No.
No, okay, I'll open up the floor for question or comment from council. Counselor Spannick, go ahead.
Your report's self-explanatory, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I gotta get down to it, I'm sorry, I'm still at five seventy-seven. Oh, there we go. Okay, I just wanted to, uh, I do have a couple of comments. What do I have here? Okay, just on page one of three, just completed all the required administrative annual reporting for twenty twenty-four. Just wanted to give a shout-out to you for that, and I'm sure the staff in the background that helped you get all that together.
Um, thank you.
Yeah, that's what else do we have? I had another, two, oh, we're talking about, um, on page three of three, we're, we're talking about Service Ontario. Do we have a timeline for that, or is that going back to council?
Um, so we have signed, uh, an extension right now. So we're still covered by the current Service Ontario agreement, well, by the one that ended over the weekend. Um, and we're working, uh, all of staff collaboratively are working to create the new system, uh, which will be brought back to council.
Okay, right on. Okay, and I'll take this opportunity, Jen, we are gonna come to that where we, uh, accept the bylaw. I want to congratulate you on, uh, accepting the role as clerk from our pain. We've all seen the transition, and we're excited to see that happen for our community and for you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, we'll carry on to the acting treasures report. I know Richard's on the screen somewhere up there.
Yeah, and I, I apologize earlier, I'm having some, uh, connection problems this evening. My internet seems to be coming and going, I was missing part of the conversation, so I dialed in on my phone. Excuse me, and listening on there, did not realizing you were also picking up my conversations, I couldn't mute my phone, anyway.
Um, yeah, no, no worries about that, I just always try and chime in because wanna make sure we protect your privacy.
I'm, I'm glad you, you let me know before I said something that, uh, could have been very, very disruptive. Anyway, um, my report, uh, I, I will quickly just say, my main focus for the last few weeks has been the year-end uh, audit and getting all of the adjustments made and getting ready for the auditors. uh audit and getting all of the adjustments made and getting ready for the auditors. Uh, that material has all been delivered to the auditors this week through uh an upload to their portal. I've had some conversations with Mitch. And by early next week, I should be able to get a timeline from them as to when they feel they will have um a draft financial statements. So hopefully within the very sh- short uh distance of time that will uh will be looking at some draft financial statements. Um, I will say, uh just as an overall comment, um I'm very pleased with the results for the year. Uh, they're not audited yet, so I don't wanna go too far, but I'm I'm happy with where things have have come out uh in compared to our budget. So other than that, uh tax rear is still working on that. Now that I can spend a little bit more time on that, I'm gonna get right back at them this uh upcoming week, uh probably after the Easter weekend. And um, yeah, all the uh capital projects and the reporting needed to be done in conjunction with the year end audit. So I think we're all up to date except with one report uh which I'll be doing in the next day or so. So does anybody have any questions?
Open up the floor for questions for Richard. Richard, I do have one question, and if you can't answer it tonight, that's fine. I just was wondering if we were to establish a fund, for example, say for the arena, and it was a substantial fund, are municipalities allowed to use the interest off of that fund annually? Like not spend the, like, say we had a grandfather investor or what have you, a heartfelt investor that gave us two million dollars.
Sure.
And we opted not to spend it, but to use the interest annually. Is a municipality allowed to do that?
Abs- absolutely.
Okay, is a municipal municipality allowed to grow that fund?
Uh, either way, uh I I guess it depends. It depends on the terms of the gift. Um, the gift could be done through a trust or or whatever, an estate. And and they may say uh that they want the principal remaining with the municipality, but the interest can be used for capital projects, for operating expenses, whatever. Um, or that there may not be any strings attached to the gift at all. So it's whatever uh would any restrictions that would come with the gift if there were any. Um, in a way, there is, the the township does have uh a chunk of money that is sitting and interest is uh accumulating and that money goes into the reserve for the community well being reserve, right? Um, that fund is, it's a similar type of thing. Um, and that money goes into a reserve for the community and is used at as council uh approves.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that, Richard. I know that was kinda off. I just wanted to know. I couldn't find it anywhere, so.
Okay.
That was all my questions and thank you for working on getting those tax careers. We appreciate it. Okay, I have no further questions. And neither does council. Thank you, Richard. Moving on to the public works manager. Do you have any uh additions to your report, Dwayne?
There's a few.
Okay.
Uh, we're finally able to break in Monday into our gravel piles and they're trying to pack their homes up quick here as possible. Secondly, the arena and the curling club ice has been a good visit today.
Oh, winter's officially done. Well, I'm I wanna applaud that that I stayed in with the curling club and the plant and so. It did, yeah? Okay, okay. I open up the floor for questions for Dwayne. Go ahead.
More comment to you, Dwayne. I know you're uphill battle and I take it on the channel of time, but roads, big improvement since you were able to get to crapple. There's that one, two, three week period there where it's just, you're getting it from every direction. Couple odd days and that rain really helped there. Yeah, it's good.
Go ahead.
The special uh material you put into the holes by Esso.
The parts and places I passed are still there. It's still sticking there so far.
Okay, thank you so much.
Oh, is that the new stuff that we tried? That's where we tried it? Okay.
It's all gone, but it uh not it wasn't enough to cover very much.
Okay.
Hasn't gone very far.
No way? But what you used last year is still?
That's everything up this year. We didn't use it last year. I was trying to spread it throughout the town, but that was the worst spot I was trying to get first.
Okay.
It all went in there pretty much.
Okay, well, we'll watch it and see. Did we take lots of pictures? Well, we should take some pictures because we're at Good Roads next year and I can talk to those people and if it's successful. Yeah. We can be there for their, uh, what's that called? Your your show person or ambassador? There we go. Okay, any further questions for, go ahead.
Actually, now that the curling closed down, did we get the numbers that we needed? It'd be a calculation. Hey, it'd be a calculation.
Yeah, your time for the FCM grant. Yeah, I think we have to still move on that, but um do we foresee any issues as of currently that we could get it up and running for next year?
More simple should be early next week, I think it is. They're gonna pump everything down. We should know any issues.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So we should, we should get pretty proactive about that this year to make sure that we're getting that um grant application in for that feasibility study. Um, any further questions? And I don't see any online. Thank you, Dwayne. And uh Economic Development Officer Stacy, do you have anything to add to your report?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Any questions for Stacy?
Go ahead. I I don't know if you can answer Stacy, maybe uh Dwayne, I just seen on your report Stacy put the baseball field grant reporting. Is it, is that place gonna be ready to use this year? Or do we have to let the seed sit for, someone asked me that. Does it have to sit for another year to to take root, or we're good to use it this year?
Supposed to, uh, with more, from the soil melts, we add more fertilizer and stuff, I'd say we'd be using this year.
Nice, okay.
It was the first trigger of a quicker set of the seeds.
Yep.
First one came in last year, going beautifully.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. Sorry I was off topic. I was just trying to.
No, that's okay. It was it's on there and we were just talking to Dwayne, so I'm good. Okay, any further questions? Okay, I won't have any further questions, okay. If I can get a a vote to accept acknowledge receipt of those reports, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to correspondence action items. We have the Ontario Deposit Return Program. Support Revolution, can I get a mover and a seconder please? Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shannon. Whereas the Ontario Deposit Return Program successfully incentivizes the recycling of alcohol beverage beverage containers resulting in the removal of over two hundred and four thousand tons of greenhouse gas emissions and whereas our community recognizes the potential for similar success with non-alcoholic beverage containers, that is as it aligns with our goals for environmental sustainability and stewardship. And whereas the Ministry of Environment Conservation Parks has expressed consideration for adopting a deposit and return system for non-alcoholic beverages presenting an opportunity for further to further promote recycling, reduce litter and encourage sustainable practices among consumers. Therefore, be it resolved with the council, the corporation of the township of Horn Pain does hereby endorse the expansion of the Ontario Deposit Return Program to include non-alcoholic beverage containers. Be it further resolved that a resolution be forwarded to the Ontario Minister of Environment Conservation and Parks, the Ontario Minister of Finance, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the Federation of Northern Municipalities Phenom. And uh just in addition, just a friendly amendment to this, could we add NOMA to this resolution as well? Okay. Any further comment on that motion? And with the uh friendly addition of NOMA, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to nine point two, Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities Letter to the Premier, Ministry of Transportation. If I can get a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor Drago Stupanic, second by councillor Ted Shannon. Whereas the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities Phenom represents one hundred and ten northern municipalities and has expressed concerns in the attached letter to premier Ford about the Ministry of Transportation's responsiveness to northern issues. And whereas the letter highlights the need for distinct approaches due to the geographical size of Ontario, weather conditions, traffic patterns and differences in highway maintenance is between the northern and southern, between northern and southern Ontario. And whereas Phenom has proposed the creation of a deputy minister or associate minister transportation for northern Ontario to improve oversight and address the unique transportation challenges faced by the region. And whereas council supports this initiative aimed to reduce fatalities and improve transportation infrastructure and accountability in northern Ontario, therefore be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain supports Federation of Northern Ontario Municipality Phenom's proposal for the appointment of a deputy minister or associate minister of transportation specifically focused on northern Ontario. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the premier of Ontario, the Ontario Minister of Transportation and Phenom. Any further discussion on that topic? Uh, councillor Stannick?
Yeah, I think it's a superb idea. This carnage on our highways in northern Ontario has to stop. There's many variables because it's happening. So I'm not gonna specifics, but it has to stop. And then, doesn't matter what you wanna call him, deputy minister, associate minister, somebody that's gonna be totally responsible for northern Ontario. I agree one hundred percent.
I agree. Go ahead, councillors.
Yeah, just to back up. I think it's geared more towards a maintenance, but absolutely, it's long overdue and I think that that's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too. Um, when we forward this to um Phenom, uh if they want any, if they want support at AMO, if they have a delegation, or I'll be at that AMO and I have no problem supporting there. Um, also at uh Phenom, councillor Stupanic will be at Phenom. And as their deputy mayor, I'm sure you're okay to be in support there as well if they need something. Just to let them know, um, yeah. We've uh tragedy has hit close to home. And for all the municipalities around, I think it needs action before rather sooner than any later. And I, oh, go ahead, councillor.
We have a friendly amendment that you did. Also send this to NEOMA as well.
To NEOMA?
Yes, please. We discussed it in the, I'll get to it at the end.
Yeah, for sure.
Part. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm gonna put that to a vote with the friendly amendment of uh addition of NEOMA as well to the motion. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on, we have correspondence information only section. If I can get a mover and a seconder to open the floor, moved by councillor Ted Shannon, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. I open up the floor for any comment to the information only. Councillor Stupanic, go ahead.
Uh, in response to the um the letter that you sent to the municipality regarding the uh two honorable Stephen McKinnon, did they respond to you at all, the ministry? The federal ministry of jobs and families regarding the post office?
No, we haven't.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I want to uh first of all, thank the staff for helping draft those letters and they were both well done. I want to comment on ten point four, the Frankphone Community Immigration Pilot Job Act. So that is up and open. That's a um a hybrid job. You can work remotely anywhere in the area. I think it's imperative that we have it because they'll work um specifically with the clients that want to immigrate to our community. So if there's somebody at the mill that falls within this program, they they'll work with them to get them uh all their paperwork and their permanent residency so that it follows through. So uh if you can share that amongst, and it's on our website as well. Thank you for that, Jen. They they did put it up, so you can if you find it on your website, you can share it with people there as well. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out on ten point six, that prescribed burn that didn't happen last year is supposed to happen this year. Just to keep, so everyone is aware going forward. No, no, it's near beaten. Yeah, but well, it's not on our woodlands. It's on Lake River side, but it is on that highway.
Okay, so it'll be right, so what you're saying it's gonna be right up adjacent to Highway six thirty one?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay. In that area.
I just like that it's, it'll be ignited between May first and October thirty first. I'm sorry. That's a pretty big window.
Show some time to Monday and next month.
Okay.
They advertised it like that previous year as well.
Well, it's understandable because if it's too dry, they're not gonna burn, right? So they gotta pick the perfect time, so. But thank you for highlighting that. Appreciate that. Okay, any further um discussion on information only? Oh, there being none, I put that to a vote to acknowledge receipt. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on, we have a committee board updates. If I can get a mover and a seconder please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Shannon. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the committee and board meeting minutes attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. And we have um two sets of minutes there. Any comments on those minutes? I just do wanna note on the ad sad meeting minutes that I have started asking questions and having them recorded in the minutes for our three communities and I reached out to the communities. This current meeting that we just had uh at the end in April here, or at the end of March, I didn't have any questions, so there won't be anything on that one. On the upcoming minutes. Okay, if there's no further comment, I'll put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, we have eleven point two council committee updates. And I'll start to my right, councillor Shannon.
Okay, thank you. We have a hospital board meeting coming up next week. Um, and there we'll have to look at a new set of bylaws that um have been mandated and we need to. And I, my understanding is that the township representation um will be eliminated from that at the end of this calendar year, so that there won't be a council representation on that board. That's what I, but I'll report back to that after the meeting to confirm.
Okay.
Something new that's come down through the, um, the more I believe through the province, it's not a hospital endeavor. It's something that's come down provincially, I believe, so we'll.
Okay, are they, are they changing the requirements for the composition of the board as well? Is it, are they moving towards more of a technical board or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that'll be done with it. Other than that, I have nothing else. Uh, with that, the Dr. Cameron has been able to have coverage pretty much through the whole summer season, so that welcomes for everything, so. It's good, so.
Yeah, it's good. And what about, I've I've heard that you um told us about hiring more nurses? Is there still a vacancy?
One, I think. Yeah, there's one. So I I will get an update on that next week, but I think it's down to one, so agency nursing has been drastically, really drastically reduced, so that's good, because that's been killing every hospital budget across Ontario, Canada.
Okay, good.
Decent shape anyways.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor, so. Councillor Kissamaker, go ahead, Peter. Nothing to add? Okay, thank you. Councillor Belinda Kissamaker.
Well, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, and you're off to uh NOMA this?
Next week.
Next week, okay. Anything exciting on the agenda?
I really haven't had a chance to look at.
Well, say hi to everyone for me. And um
Yeah, I think I had a numerous meetings this past month, and last part of the, start with the library board. We met on April first, April fourteenth. And we're gonna meet again April twenty ninth. The key takeaway from uh last two meetings, we had a library team consisted of Darnell, Samantha and along with advisor, we created a a new document, human resource policies from A to Z and covers all the areas in human resources. The team did an excellent job. It'll be passing that uh motion uh next meeting on the twenty ninth.
Oh, good.
Great work by the team. I went to NEOMA on March twenty eighth. New president, you know, it's moved our fall, sorry, is Sylvie. It's happy to that she, she's the councillor in Cockburn from Cockburn. And the vice president is, I do not know, but she was just virtual, uh Madeline Tremblay. Mayor of Oke, Strickland. She was quite excited. Was interesting, in that spectrum, you could nominate yourself.
Yeah.
I attend a thousand meets in my life, I never saw that before.
Oh, really? You can self-nominate, I did it, what did I do it at, ad-sab? I did it somewhere.
I never saw that happen before. And my old age was, I was nervous, I mean.
There you go.
The, Nioma's going to review their constitution because there, there's a lot of changes, because there's fourteen municipalities now, and we're part of it, we are part of, and we were not previously, so we're going to be reviewing that, and they'll fall under Sylvie's, Compluse Sylvie from Cochrane to spearhead that. We discussed thoroughly highway closures, I brought up your issue. Highway being closed between Hurst and Hornpane, yet the accident is down a hundred kilometers. We also discussed the carnage on the highways, the lack of, the whole spectrum. So what we felt was, we discussed affordable housing in northeast Ontario. Cell phone exit is passenger service train to Hurst, was all, all supported. And chair of resolution support. All these resolutions will be sent to each municipality for, especially for the roads to be signed by the mayor, resolution, and headed through the council. We also have decided as a group, it really was a very productive meeting, actually, three hours of solid. We're going to invite Minister Perry next meeting. We're hoping the Minister of Transportation shows up. Or anybody that shows up has the power to make decisions, other than wasting everybody's time. We all agreed at the table, there was about thirty of us or so. A good mix, so. All the stuff will be shared. Where all the municipalities, municipalities will be sent out electronically. I also brought up the, as I mentioned to Melanie, our HAA. And after meeting, a first councillor from Apasatica, they had the same problem for six months, HIHJA. All the results that the, to the lab they were sending skewed the results. They had to send it to another lab, they were below the maximum numbers. So lab was making mistakes. And this is from a councillor that.
Which council was that?
I don't know his name, I spoke about twenty of them, but I, it's from Apasatica and, yes. But they went to another lab, and they were within the regulation readings for HAA.
So does that fall into Velrita Hardy, is that that municipality? Is that where?
Apasatica, Velita Hardy, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. There's got a new CEO, actually, that's what he said.
Yeah.
But I, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Make sure that it's the.
What the labs are.
Which the labs are, like, where ours being tested, and what was that?
Yeah.
Just double check.
Yeah, very sincere, came up after
Yeah.
the meeting, and it said, never guess what happened to us, so.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah. As the mayor brought up, the Frankophone Community Immigration Pilot Program Steering Committee, we have met on April third, very nice committee. Tracy, I really enjoyed the, the area that we covered. Yes, as you saw the job description, and there'll be, it's self-entour of the fact that sent it to Jennifer to put her in our correspondence, two days in the office and two days virtually. And this person will be traveling to each community, any community could apply. Obviously, there's just states that has preference will be given, high preference to people that speak both languages. Because it's a part of the demand. Pays a fair dollar, also have very good health coverage. And this program will go until December twenty twenty nine, so it's a pretty solid position to have as an individual. And you don't have to be from northeast Ontario, as we discussed in our committee, could be from anywhere, but the preference will be given, I assume, people that are from northeast Ontario, that they know the lay of the land, as it were. We're meeting again on April thirtieth. And further, our stuff that we're doing, and it's all, all of these are virtual.
Okay.
I really enjoyed all the individuals I met across, and very discuss it. It was enjoyable.
Right on.
I'm glad I'm part of it.
Well, I'm glad we have it. It's the right step in the right direction, we need more, but I'd like to see our.
And that person will be visiting each community. And most likely looking for some space, you know, for that half a day or something, and I, I did say, I can't make it come in, but if you book in advance, we'll make, we will try to accommodate you, I did say this, but I answered, because it's crucial to have the person, wherever they could find the space, to sit down with clients and discuss it. Because they'll be heading this, the person that's hired, they're so, be driven by this program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I do have something to mention from our LCC meeting.
Okay.
What I want to mention is, we had a presentation on where they stock fish over time. And one of the things that came up from our, from the chair, Margue Zajak, she had brought up Cedar Point at one time was stocked. There was fish put in there, and there was not, and so what was asked was, can they do it again? So the M and R was going to look into it and bring it forward, if that was a possibility or whatever, going for.
Okay.
If we can.
Did Morgan know why they had stopped at the?
Apparently, the reason why it was stocked was because they had some fish they needed to put somewhere, and they were able to put it in, in Cedar Point, out of the lake.
Okay.
And, but it never happened again. So it was brought up, and it was, it would be interesting to find out if we can or not.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Because there is some nice fish that has come out of that lake.
Yes, yeah. Well, the fish derby's getting bigger and bigger out there, right? So that'd be great. Okay, thanks for that.
Thanks.
From my perspective on the mayor's seat, so Good Roads had a really good conference. I am president of Ontario Good Roads, I'm very excited with it, thank you. It was, we had stuff right off the hop, the first meeting, so you get handed the batons vote, so to speak, on the Wednesday, and then you host your first meeting right after that, with the new board. Very excited to work with the new board. We have Melissa Abercrombie from, she's a director from the administration of public works side, and she's our third vice, so this time around, we have two women on the executive. So that's really moving in the right direction too, so I'm excited for that this year. And we'll be hosting the annual general meeting here in Hornpane on June eighteenth. And you'll all be here and fight dinner on either the first or second night. We are looking for people to help with a fishing adventure excursion on the Thursday evening. I've had the call out to go fishing, and they're only here from Wednesday afternoon, and they leave Friday morning. So my thoughts on this is to try and plan some sort of dinner at some cottage and have the fishing happen at the same time to. And, and I will hope to reach out, I want to reach out to the mill for a tour of the mill and the Kogen while they're here, and, and then hopefully we'll be able to do a small tour at CM, and then, of course, our own facilities within the township. But they're all excited to come, there's only two so far, they can't come because they have free ones, their son's getting married. I understand that, and the other one is a graduation, one of their children is graduating, so. But I was excited, I'm really excited to have them here, and to introduce you to the people that I've been able to work with over the last, since two thousand and nineteen. Some, some of our colleagues around the table have been able to meet them, so. But, but further that, I wanted to highlight at the conference, and I mean, I, I say this because I want the public to know that, so Good Roads does pay the expenses for me to be on that, and it helps our community, helps small communities. When you become president, you're allowed to go to one provincial conference and one national conference, and they pay, and they pay for a companion to go with you and to the conference itself. And because I, everyone knows I don't have a companion, I asked if it would be acceptable for someone at this table from our township to come, and we had those conversations, you know, last year with Eileen, and it was discussed, Jen could go. So, but the exciting part about this was, I thought it was great, just because if we're building capacity in Hornpane, it's great to share that with another Hornpaner. But when we were there, I got to introduce Jen to Fred Dean. And if you recall, I've mentioned Fred Dean before, he's a municipal expert. And when I came on council, I came in midterm, there was no training going on at that time, and basically jumped off the deep end, Pete knows. Yeah, basically jumped off the deep end without a life jacket, and I didn't know what I was getting into, but all good things, yeah, all good things, but I, at that time, I asked for some training, and Gail had set me up with Fred Dean, and I got to take this training one-on-one, two hours on my own, and I had no idea at the time, the valuable training I was getting. So I had the opportunity to introduce Jen to Fred Dean and Nigel at one point as well, but but Fred said something very intriguing that hit home for me, and I think it hit home for Jen as well. He said, first of all, he thanked me, he said, I thank you for sharing this with your community, and then he looked right at Jen, and I might paraphrase it wrong, but that the experience he was going to gain at being in, at the conference was going to be invaluable in that situation, in that. And it was, right, Jen, it was, anyway, I just, it was, I, I, I think it's a good thing for Hornpane. It's a good thing for people in our community to, when they go to the conferences outside and meet some of the professionals that are out there, and I know Jen made several contacts, and I, I know she's already got policies and different things, because she met a lot of the board members. And, and it does, it brings up our expertise level, because iron sharpens iron. And when you're around some really smart people, you're, you're only bound to get a bit smarter, so. So it was, it was a good conference. So with that being said, wait for further details for June. For other meetings that we had. We had the Northeast Superior's mayor's meeting, virtually, or just last week, and a few different items out of that that we're going to collaborate on. We did send a congratulations letter to Mishkot First Nation for their new council that was just elected, and applaud them, and hope to work with them in the future. We also talked about Highway eleven at that table as well, and some different items, so what Counselor Stefanik was talking about, how, where we're seeing closures and then our highways closing, some of the things that are happening in Duberville is they don't even know that the highways close, they go out, and now they, they're traveling on closed highways either north or, or east or west. And there's dead zones in their cell service, so they're not even getting the five-one-one updates. So we are talking about possibly a joint delegation, moving something forward, we want to participate any way we can to see this change for northern, for, especially getting the information out that where certain highways aren't closed. Another item that was discussed was, was it Hawk Junction that was discussed at the meeting? And that people are getting stuck in Wawa, and they can't get back out to Hawk Junction to where they live, and then they have to stay overnight or expense or what have you in Wawa, so. So we're seeing this, this is an isolated to Hornpane what we're seeing, some of the other highway closures that we're seeing around the north, so it was good to have that conversation, I was glad to talk to everyone about that. Moving forward, we also, I'm going to send some information to Jen and the CAO about the drive test center. Doing a delegation for AMO and the drive test centers, because we need, with the increased immigration, and this has been on the docket so many times, and now that we have a sitting government member that can help us and assist us, we're hoping we'll get some movement on this, so that we can have more testing done in our communities and year-round, and create, get rid of the backlog that's happening, so. Further that, the other meeting that was held on the same day was the Northern Ontario Women's Association meeting. We had a really great turnout for that meeting, we're moving forward with some stances for what the Northern Ontario Women's Association expects for, in regards to social media and respect for when women are serving. It's a well-known stat, and data's out there to support it, that women politicians get attacked far heavier, both on social media and in the background. And so we're trying to support, what we're looking at is the first avenue step we're going to do is, we've invited all the members to a roundtable discussion one evening, to hear what are some of the proactive approaches we could take. Even just having organization in the background that supports you and has a stance, and then you can reiterate that. So if you're, for example, getting an inappropriate question during a media blitz, or in that case, and then you can respond and be, no, that's an unsuitable question, it has nothing to do with the topic at hand, and, and then you can actually refer to a policy or, or a website, so. Just to give, equip people is basically what we're looking at. But anyway, it was, it was a good meeting, I'm looking forward to seeing that come to, the whole association come to fruition. And we are looking at incorporating this year, we're working with them to wish our background to have that happen. So further that, I will be attending Gulf Road School for Good Roads and meeting all the people there at the, so I'm excited to go to the school. And I'll be there for three days, and I meet all the students and all our volunteer instructors, so. Yeah, and that's it for my report right now. Go ahead, Counselors.
Yeah, who else is on the board from Northern Ontario? Is it Kristen Murray still?
Kristen Murray's there, yes, yes, and, oh, and I did, I brought this up at where was it, oh, and I went to Adma on Saturday too, I didn't even mention that, we had a great meeting at Adma. And that's where I mentioned that coming up, there are going to be vacancies on the Good Roads board. And we did create a Northwest Northeast Zone, so that you can participate. And, and I do at this table, it's both for elected officials and for staff. And they do have slots, we have a diversity, diversity, equity, and inclusion lens that we go through when we're creating the slate. And we do look at ensuring we have a finance member, a CAO, administrative member, public works engineers, and then elected officials that balance it out, so it's, it's a good working board, I've learned a lot, because although we're all elected on this, on this council, in, on that board, you get a very different perspective sometimes, and, and it works both ways. Sometimes it's the elected officials educating the administrative public works side, staff side, or the staff side giving us lessons, and it's a good learning experience, so. So I thank you for asking me that, Drago, because you reminded me of the other meeting. So we did talk at Adma, we had a presentation from the Algoma Public Health. There's a toxic drug report out, I did ask if it was a mandatory report that all health units had to do it, is not. It is a really good report, though, I would encourage people to check it out. And it's, it shows that, basically what they're looking at is, there's different ways that you can interject to stop communities from heading down the wrong path, in the sense of using drugs, right? And we, and they call it upstream and downstream. So when you're dealing with downstream, you're dealing with the symptoms of the drug use or the toxic drugs. And then if you go upstream, you want to stop it before it starts. And, and these, this report really focuses on midstream, before it's, you know, before you're symptoms of drug use, it's how do we help in the middle, if it's, if that's with transitional housing, what have you. And then the upstream of it is, what can we do in our communities to stop it before it happens? I bring this up because when I first got on council, we don't see the, the drug use, or I didn't personally see the drug use in the effect of people dying in our streets in Hornpane, I never want to see that. But over the course of the last eight years, it has happened, and we are seeing the effects because some of our young people are going into the cities, and they are, they are dying in the city. So that's where the upstream for, when I was looking at the report, I think it fits for us, is what are those upstream things that we can collaborate in our, say, our community well-being guidelines of helping young people prepare for the city when they go? Because the drugs that are out there aren't the same, that it's, it's high potency, like deaths are happening, and then once you're in the cycle of addiction and abuse of the drugs, it, you want the, you want the heavier drug, it, it's just, it's mind-boggling to me. But anyway, the report is out there, it was well done. The presentation was well done. And I hope that our health unit will come up with something similar because I think it would be beneficial. And with that, I'm going to move on if there's any other questions or comments. There being none, okay, we'll move on to new and other business. Item 12.1. And did anyone want to speak to this before I read the motion?
I can answer questions if there are any.
Okay, I'll put the motion on the floor. And if there's any questions, we can speak to it. Moved by Counselor Peter Kissamaker, second by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas the township staff, or sorry, whereas the township of Horn Pain staff and counselor fully equipped with Microsoft 365 licenses, including Microsoft Teams, eliminating the need for additional software costs. And whereas Microsoft Teams provides robust integration, security features and compliance with regulatory standards such as AMP FIPPA, enhancing operational efficiency and data protection. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the Corporation of the Township of Horn Pain does hereby authorize the immediate transition from GoToMeetings to Microsoft Teams as the primary platform for conducting all council and staff meetings. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a good move, it's a good move. GoToMeeting, I always have trouble signing in every single time.
Okay. Thank you for that, Ted. I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to bylaws. The ratification of the Q P agreement, if I can get a mover in a second, please. Moved by Counselor Ted Schenman, second by Counselor Drago Stefanik. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2121 being a bylaw to enter into a collective agreement with the local 3-05 of the Canadian Union of Public Employees Q P. Be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on that bylaw? Okay, there being none, I put it to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Thank you. I do want to say thank you to the staff and to the committee that worked in the background to have this done. I think this is one of the earliest times that we've passed the agreement. Sometimes we're a year behind and we're only, I think, four months. So it's pretty good. Okay, item number 13.2 is non-unionized job classification structure. If I can get a mover in a second, please. Moved by Counselor Ted Schenman, second by Counselor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2122 being a bylaw to adopt the non-union salary grid and job classification structure for the Township of Horn Pain. Be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on that bylaw? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Bylaw number 2123, appoint the clerk. Moved by, moved by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker, second by Counselor Ted Schenman. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2123 being a bylaw to appoint a clerk for the Township of Horn Pain. Be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on that bylaw? I would just like to say congratulations. And I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, item number 13.4, appoint weed inspector.
My favorite.
Somebody was going to say something. Wait till I say the congratulations.
You bring the bag.
Okay, mover in a second, please. Moved by Counselor Drago Stefanik, second by Counselor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2124 being a bylaw to appoint a weed inspector for the Corporation of the Township of Horn Pain. Be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on that motion? I say congratulations. Those in favor? And those in favor? And that is carried.
Take a few pauses for congratulations, congratulations.
Okay, we have, item number 14 is 14.1, notices of motion. And I don't have the actual notice because I have this one on.
No, but the motion is.
Oh, did you put it, oh, sorry. Yes, and I will have to relinquish chair because I put the motion on the floor. So I'll hand it over to Counselor or get the Mayor Stefanik.
All right. Any comments, input, discussion on the notice of motion, please?
I can speak to it if you like.
Please do.
Okay, I was approached by, over the course of a few years now, but more recently, just the other day of, from businesses about business licensing. I wasn't aware of some of the intricacies that are happening in the background. Businesses aren't feeling protected, the ones especially that have brick and mortar, paying water, sewer and other items. And they think that business licensing may help us. So I brought it up the agenda meeting and the suggestion was to put our notice of motion on the floor. And I want to thank Jen and Melanie for helping me word this properly and everything and putting what people are looking for, business owners are looking for on the table. So that's where it comes from and I'm the mover of this, right? And I move this.
Any comments, input again, please? Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Stefanik. I, it was our recommendation after having the discussion that council direct staff to, to go back, prepare a report. Certainly, since local businesses are, do feel strongly about this, we did suggest that we assign a timeline. So to bring this back, it is a, would be an in-depth report. So we didn't want to say by next council meeting or anything like that. So I did suggest a timeline of by the end of Q2, which is June 30th. So, so to give us a, you know, a handful of weeks to pull some, pull some data together. And it would be my recommendation that I would work with the Economic Development Officer to, to really work with the local business group and then certainly work with businesses that are primarily selling wares through social media and, and working out of their homes. There's, this is certainly not, not a practice that is, you know, only happening in horn pain. This is happening throughout small towns and, and in big cities throughout Ontario. So there's best practices. And I think with a little bit of research and, and by working with the business, the businesses and, and people, we can certainly support everyone by building policy that's collaborative and making sure that everybody is, is well supported in a fair and equitable manner.
Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
It is something that we've been talking about before and it is going to keep coming up. And it's probably time to do something about it.
Any other comments?
I personally concur 100% with the motion. I'm not sure what happened to our, we had this business license and I'll tell you how. Approximately 25 years ago, my wife, Lorraine, had a arts and crafts business. She would have to get a license at the municipal office in states where she was selling. It was a minimum fee, if I remember correctly. This is about 20 years ago, $10.15. And there was a list of all the businesses that were in the community. I meant a very, I'm not sure why it demolished, why it became dead or dismantled. I have no idea why. But we did have one for years, just some history on it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Please, please, I apologize.
So council wishes to pass this motion tonight, we'll need a second, and then I can read that.
Also, Belinda Kissamaker? Thank you.
So moved by Mayor Cheryl Fort, seconded by Counselor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas the Township of Horn Pain strives to support local businesses and ensure a fair operating environment. And whereas business licensing can promote compliance and public safety. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs staff to prepare a report regarding the implementation of business licensing in Horn Pain, including but not limited to the benefits and potential challenges of implementing business licensing in the township, best practices and regulatory frameworks for business licensing in comparable municipalities, financial implications and resource requirements for the township, engagement strategies with local businesses and stakeholders to gather input and feedback, and proposed timelines for implementation and any necessary legislative or policy amendments. Be it further resolved, staff report back with their findings and recommendations to council at an upcoming regular meeting before the end of Q2.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on, we're going to the closed session. Oh, probably want a few minutes break. I'll, do we want to do that before we move in or what would be better? Probably so you can get stuff set. We'll go.
I was going.
Okay, if I can move in a second to move into closed. Moved by Counselor Peter Kissamaker, second by Counselor Ted Schenman. Be it resolved at the next meeting, or sorry, next portion of the meeting at 7:40 PM. Be closed to the public in order to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations or employee negotiations, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, advice that is subject to solicitor compliance privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to negotiations. Pursuant to section 239 2B D E F K of the Municipal Act 2001. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, thanks for doing it, Stacy. Have a good night. Do you still wear glasses regularly? Do you still wear glasses regularly?
All right, we are good to go.
All right, we need a mover and a second to open, come to open meeting. Councilor Schumer, Councilor Ted.
Um, be it resolved that Council of the Corporation of the Townshipal Porn Care is hereby returned to open council at 9:43 PM.
All in favor? Carrie.
Okay.
Go ahead, mover and a second please.
Uh, so first we should say, uh...
Oh, we're going to, item number fifteen two, fifteen point two, uh, it's ongoing. And Council has given direction to staff, fifteen point three and fifty point four.
Fifteen point two has a motion.
Motion.
Yes.
I apologize.
No worries, sorry.
Norris Meyer, I apologize for that.
So, yeah.
Mover the second please. Councilor Ted, Councilor Belinda.
Whereas the Corporation of the Townshipal Porn Care is currently involved in a number of confidential employment related matters, and whereas Resolution Number 2024-324 passed on September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, delegated authority to the Deputy Mayor and Councilor Scheneman to handle these matters, and whereas by Bylaw Number 2115, Council appointed an interim CAO on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, therefore be it resolved that Resolution Number 2024-324 is hereby repealed in its entirety, authority is hereby delegated to the interim CAO to complete the remaining proceedings related to the confidential employment matters, manage communications with the municipal solicitor and/or other involved agents, and provide necessary instructions, and the interim CAO is authorized and directed to report to Council on completion of these matters and implement the decisions of Council as necessary. Be it further resolved that this delegation of authority to the interim CAO will remain in effect until the completion of the confidential employment related matters or until a permanent CAO is hired, whichever comes first. Be it finally resolved that should these matters still be ongoing when a permanent CAO is acquired, this authority will be transferred to the permanent CAO upon their appointment.
Speaker Jennifer, all in favor? Carrie. All right, uh, now to the one I said earlier, item fifteen point three, fifteen point four, it's ongoing issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor. And, uh, so there's no further business to conduct tonight, so I'll call for the adjournment of the confirmatory bylaw first, if I can get a mover and a second, or move by Councilor Deterk Sustainer, second by Councilor Ted Scheneman. Be it resolved that Bylaw Number 2125 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of Council at their regular meeting held on Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, be hereby read, uh, sorry, be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed, those in favor? And that is Carrie. And the adjournment, the mover and a second, or move by Councilor Daniel Spence, second by Councilor Belinda Sustainer, be it resolved that Council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting at Council, hold on Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, at 9:46 PM, those in favor? And that is Carrie. Have a good night, Council.
You too, everyone.